Good evening, everyone. It is somewhere close to six o'clock and I apologize for the fact that we're late this evening. We had an issue we were discussing in the executive session and it ran a little longer than we had anticipated, so we ask for your forgiveness of being late this evening on that. And I would say, good evening. At this time, I will call the Perry City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, February the 18th, 2022 quarter. We have a forum. At this time, if you're able, I would invite you to stand for the invocation and the pledge allegiance to the flag. We want to give it to Perry County and the flag and allegiance to the flag will be council members all ready.
This by his feet. Father God, we thank you so much for another opportunity. I pray not but for the city as you give us wisdom as we handle this problem that we're facing in our community. And Lord, we know without a doubt that you will give us this wisdom because we come together and agree with you. And we thank him, we praise, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four on our agenda is appearances, and item four A is an appearance of Mr. Warren Johnson. Mr. Johnson, would you please stand and give us your address, please?
Can we go there?
If you're comfortable, where?
One or four city is Warren Johnson, one or four city is Drive Perry, Georgia.
Okay.
Okay. You can have a handout there regarding the stormwater issues that we experienced, particularly on lot one of six in Cheshire Place and some on 104. And it's an issue we've been working for months, working through the channels. Ms. Evelyn Hayes is the one mostly affected, and she has made numerous calls to the developer. And they've made some attempts, but none of them affected the same stormwater runs every time. And I've been through Sarah Nottingham, Chad McCarion, Assistant City Manager came out, and they've made some attempts. They put a berm up, put a berm in one section, and so the water, believe it or not, founds its way around that one berm and still goes. The water issue has not abated at all. And at some point in time, they need to, I'm asked to use your authority to require the developer to make a permanent fix because it's still raining again. And it looks like we'll have a lot of, even this week, this morning was an issue. And that's it. I've provided pictures where I showed it comes from that location where they, it used to be a bog behind our house. They raised the elevation approximately about two feet, which makes the water, obviously, that land higher than our lots now. That's a man-made issue. This is not a natural phenomenon. And then they told Mr. McCarion that they had sloped the lots toward their street in Legacy. You can see from one of the pictures that from the front of the house to the back of the lot leading toward Cheshire, it slopes to us. They purposefully sloped it toward us. And so somebody is misleading somebody on this issue, and we're buried in the brunt. We've been told just to wait till they put the grass in. If that seems a little bit ridiculous to you, it does to me as well, because the water's still going to flow, the color may change. And what I've shown in those pictures is its origin, the fact that it makes it all the way to the street across Ms. Evelyn's yard. It mainly just stands in my backyard. If it were only me, I wouldn't be here. But here's a lady who needs a little help in presenting the case to you folks. And I'm simply, the request is that you use your authority to require them to make a permanent fix, a long-term permanent fix, where if it rains two days in a row or three days in a row, it's not an issue for Ms. Evelyn or any other person. And if they only stop it in that one location, it will simply move to the next lot. So the engineers are telling Mr. McCarion that this is not a problem, but they haven't told the water yet. So that's the issue. And if you have any questions, I'll try and answer those, otherwise I'll move to the second issue.
Any questions?
This is one that presents a little bit of hazard that you may or may not be aware of. I rebuilt my deck in the back of my yard, and as I was digging holes, I cut a gas line with a crankle-sized hole digger. It looks like this. So I went and cut the gas off to my house. The gas line was still live. So that gas line was run somewhere before my meter and ran somewhere underneath my deck and possibly our house. And if you look at the picture that I've given you, it ran it within a couple of inches of the concrete foundation. Using a metal holder, striking that foundation at the same time you break a gas line can be an issue or go sparks. What I found out was, so after that, I called 911. The fire department came out, responded immediately. They knew that that was the occurrence as a past practice, that they were running plastic gas lines, okay? And when the utilities department came out and fixed it, and there's a picture of their decks, they put an old dresser coupling on this pipe. It runs from somewhere to somewhere underneath my deck and possibly underneath my house. I called 811, and they came out, and I showed them where I was going to dig. I didn't tell them about this gas line. They don't know this gas line's there. The folks who did know it was there is the fire department and the utilities department knew that this was a past practice. And they sent me immediately a week after that a long letter from the gas utility saying, typically, high gas lines are run. You run to one house from the main, one house to the main, not any supplemental lines. So the utilities department knew it was a past practice, the fire department knew it was a past practice. The people who don't know it's an issue are the utilities' location people and the homeowners. So what I'm trying to do now is raise awareness, because if you're unaware of this and the right situation occurs, you may wind up with a real issue. So taking some steps to address the extent of this issue, raise the awareness, so that at least the utilities people can identify this as an issue that somebody's going to dig. That's it. That's all the question to you folks. Thank you for your time.
More than I, I think that you have our guest people looking for that, and let's take corrective action that we need to. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I'm happy to hear.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
How many homeowners would you estimate have this issue?
Yes, the trouble, I haven't got a clue. But the fact that other people, that the utilities department and the fire department knew about it before I called, they recognized the issue, they had the dresser coupling because they've apparently done this before. So a fellow by the name of Robic, he said it was before Robic, meaning that that used to be a practice in this city, but I don't know how many. But it's probably not limited to Cheshire.
We will investigate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Council members, anything else? Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming and bringing those issues before us this evening.
Item five is recognitions and presentations. Item five A is a presentation to the mayor and council from the Georgia Association of Water Professionals. Mr. Thomas is here with us this evening.
Yes, sir. My name is Mike Thomas. I'm with the Georgia Association of Water Professionals. We represent thousands of water professionals throughout Georgia, not only our local utilities, but consultants, engineers, contractors, a lot of folks who work in the water industry in Georgia, which provide training, advocacy, and networking for them as an industry. And what brings me here tonight is we have a awards program to recognize the great work that they do. These people often work behind the scenes and nobody knows what they're up to, but they're trying to keep you safe and provide clean water. So we have a lot of hardware tonight to recognize and win. I'm going to start off with the, what we call the George Burton Safety Award. This recognizes one wastewater plant in Georgia for having excellent safety practices. And this year, your facility and your contract operators were the recipient of that award. Our volunteer auditors look at over 20 safety areas in a wastewater plant. You've got dangerous chemicals, you've got high voltage electricity that they're working around, you've got tanks full of water that's usually aerated that you can't really swim in, you have confined spaces with dangerous gases in them. So it's a very dangerous environment, but your folks have put practices in place and being recognized for having a very safe working environment. So that's excellent to know, that these people hopefully are going to go home safe every night. I know as a former utility director, last thing you want to do is deal with an axle. So that's the first award, and again, they were the one plant in Georgia to receive that award. Second award is for outstanding operation of wastewater collection system. And this is the platinum award, meaning they've won this award at least five years in a row, and I believe this is year number eight. Again, we have auditors look at dozens of different parameters to make sure they're managing that wastewater collection system in a professional manner and implementing the practices to control it the best they can. Now, when we, you know, you're talking about stormwater, when we get it kind of raining again right now, that's even tougher job to do. But these folks have done an excellent job to be recognized. They have to score at least 95 points out of 100 during the evaluation, and so they've done that eight years running. And then finally, one that I'd be really proud of too is for, we have nine districts in the state with Perry being District Five, and for the second year in a row, District Five, they were recognized as having the best taste in drinking water. So again, that's a fantastic job and something to be proud of. So I want to call up Cory and Chip and Travis and Sharon to be recognized. I'll let one of them, everybody grab an award. And just want to congratulate y'all for the fine work you've done.
Appreciate it.
So why don't you guys come down front so we can get a picture of you with your plaques and everything, so we can brag about what you've got us do every day. Mr. Thomas, thank you for coming. We're always delighted, because you always bring nice wall plaques for these people who work so hard every day to make the water quality here in Perry what it is. And I had the opportunity last night to do a presentation, and part of my bragging was about all of the gold and platinum that this group has, you know, been able to achieve over the last five to eight years that I've been aware of it, and the work that they do each and every day to make sure that we've got great water, we've got a great wastewater system, and they manage that very, very effectively for us, and we really appreciate it.
We appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Item five B is the introduction of a new animal control officer, Kira Marsick. Chief?
Thank you, sir. Kira, will you come forward, please? So I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce our newest employee to y'all. She's been on the job two weeks today. As you know, everybody starts work on Tuesday. So two weeks ago this Tuesday, Kira started with us. She kind of lived a few places growing up, mostly in Florida. Her dad was career Air Force, and she's worked with animals from small to wildlife to work at a zoo with large animals. She trains animals, so she knows a bit about animals, which is part of the reason that we hired her. She lives here in Perry now with her husband, her two children, and their animals, two dogs and a...
I'm trying to drag it sometime. True, he's being especially ill. Kira, if you'll introduce yourself to the mayor and council.
He did a pretty good job, though.
Well, we're glad to have you with us. We're glad that you chose Perry to come to. Do you have some guests who you'd like to introduce back there? I hear she knows what kind of dragging it is.
Yes, that was my oldest Abby, and my youngest is Ellie, and my mom's actually right there, too.
Glad you joined us this evening.
Kids were out of school, mom had a new job.
Great. Welcome to town. Thank you.
Welcome. Glad to have you. Thank you. Thank you for joining.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Marsick. We appreciate you. Thank you. Accepting a job in Perry. I'd love to have, we're glad to have you here.
I'm glad to be here.
Item six on our agenda are community partner updates. Is there anyone here, one of our community partners who would like to update mayor and council at this time?
Mayor, mayor and council, Ellen Palmer with the Perry Chamber, and just wanted to brought a couple of updates tonight. One is recently, we took our youth leadership and our adult leadership groups up to the state capitol. I guess that was a week and then two weeks ago. They had great trips up there. They got to meet and learn and speak with some of our state legislators up there. The adult leadership class also got to go to the Chick-fil-A Innovation Center, which was really a wonderful experience. We have several city representatives in this adult leadership class, a few of them are here tonight, and I think they're enjoying the class. It was a great experience to hear from our state representatives and also from a Chick-fil-A perspective and the leadership they have at that company. It really is remarkable what they do at Chick-fil-A. So that was a great experience. And then also just wanted to say, save the date for the Dogwood Festival. It's coming up quicker than we think, so it's April 18th and 19th, so save the date for that, and I think I'll be formally requesting that at the next council meeting, but wanted to go ahead and let you know about those dates.
Thank you.
And we intend always for y'all's support of the chamber.
Any questions, council members? We look forward to the Dogwood Festival every year, and it sounds like you guys have got a really active weekend planned for us.
We're excited.
So we look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and joining us. Any other community partners here this evening that would like to address mayor or council?
I'm not a member of anything, but I would like to invite all of you out to the Ag Center this weekend.
Yes, ma'am.
Perry's fortunate to have the State Livestock Show. There'll be, well, this past weekend was the county show, and they had 253 pigs just from Houston County, along all the cows. So you can imagine what the state show will bring to Perry. So if you want to go out and eat or sleep, do it tomorrow. Don't do it after that because the rooms are filled and the restrooms are filled.
And we're proud to have that fairgrounds out there because they do that most weekends, and we really appreciate what they bring to Perry.
But this is something for us, this state show is always real big.
Thank you for advising us of that. Item seven is citizens with input. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to address mayor and council at this time? Yes, sir. Can we have your name and address?
I'm Cunningham in House in Springs, and my seat was here, which is good. Primarily for Mr. Gilmore, yes, and it's good. We had, one of our residents took out a light pole. I wish you wouldn't. I would have dressed up. One of our residents took out a light pole several months ago, and they replaced it. Thank you. It's great, I appreciate it. Absolutely with that. Second of all, at the end of Pebble Beach, there's that hole, and they had a sub truck there for a week that's really loud, and then they were back again, I think yesterday or day before. What's the status of that hole, you know? Or if you don't know.
As far as I know, I think that's part of the project that council approved about redoing the stormwater drainage over there.
Okay. So it's still a student project?
Right. What they're having to do is go in, manually get in, hand-person in like a vacuum and clean out all the silt, and then they're going to determine how much work has to be done on the pipe.
Okay. They renumbered 341, which used to go, or same number. Why did they do that? To route it up on the bypass?
I don't know on that.
Okay. All right. And number four, Mr. Smith, is not you, but that's on the calendar that we're getting. Food Truck Friday back in April. Yay!
I'm sorry. Give me, let me go back. You talk about the change on 341 in town?
Yes.
The primary reason that was done, and that was based on a recommendation which council concurred with, was to take off as much of the through traffic coming through downtown as possible. The original intent of the Perry bypass, which it generally has done, is to take people who are coming, going through Perry, not to Perry, to take them around the downtown. And particularly now, depending on where you may be going or what the GIS or what's that, WIS or whatever system it has, it may take you through downtown when it was at state route. So council requested and BOT agreed to stop 341 at Main Street and Perry Parkway or by where the new Dollar Store is. Take 341 on its regular route instead of it being a business, it's the regular route coming around.
Okay. Any status on our traffic light or something at Airport Road and...
Per the request, that request has been sent by the mayor to the Georgia Department of Transportation, and we are waiting on a response from them.
Okay. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you joining us this evening.
I'm sorry?
Appreciate you joining us this evening. Is there anyone else that would like to address mayor and council at this time? Thank you. Item eight is review of the minutes, 8A. Council members, you have been provided with the minutes for the February the 3rd, 2020 work session, the February 4th, 2020 free council member meeting, excuse me, and February 4th, 2020 council meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept these minutes as written. So as a motion and a second, are there any additions, changes, or deletions for these minutes at this time? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes as written, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show that the minutes were approved unanimously. Thank you. Item nine is old business. 9A is old business from the mayor, and I do not have any this evening. 9B is old business from the council members. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Albritt?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Brett Timbkey?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Item 9C is anything from the city attorney, Ms. Newby?
Yes, sir. Nothing, sir.
Thank you. 9D is anything from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
9E is any old business from the assistant city manager, Mr. Smith?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 10 is new business. Item 10A are matters referred from the 2018, 2018-2020 pre-council meeting. Mr. Gilmore, there was nothing that came out of our February 18th pre-council meeting for this evening.
Correct.
Thank you. Item 10B are resolutions for introduction and adoption. 10B1 is a resolution supporting legislation for the Georgia Local Government Infrastructure Financing Authority. Council members, we have been requested by the Georgia Municipal Association to pass a resolution in support of this legislation. It is currently being heard in committee in Atlanta in this session. It is a legislation that the Georgia Municipal Association is asking to be approved that will allow them to issue bonds. As you know, they have a leasing company that we lease a great deal of our equipment through, but they're looking to extend their ability to make lower interest rate funding available to cities for building and infrastructure, and this is, this will require an action by the state legislature, and they're asking us to approve this resolution in support of that. Any questions relative to that? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution as presented. So move. As a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Let the record show that the resolution was approved unanimously. Thank you. Item 10B2 is a resolution declaring certain vehicles and equipment surplus. Ms. Keen?
Yes, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Resolution that you have before me is requesting two vehicles and one piece of equipment as surplus. The first one is a 1999 van that was currently, that was used by the Department of Leadership Services, as you can see from the photo on screen, that the outside is, paint is peeling. Inside, seats are torn and handles missing from the seats. Not included is a picture of the headliner, which is, the headliner is also missing, and the engine is not in very good shape. Second one is a 2002 Silverado, which was used by Public Works. This vehicle has over 140,000 miles, and the transmission is very bad. Third one is a forklift that was purchased or obtained from the Department of Administrative Services Surplus Division over 15 years ago, and it is inoperable at the time. So Mr. Taylor is requesting that these items be declared surplus for disposal.
Thank you, Ms. Keen. Any questions for Ms. Keen relative to these three items that have been requested to declare Hearing none, all in favor of approving the request as submitted, please indicate, I'm sorry, I will entertain a motion to approve this resolution as presented. So a motion and a second, all in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show that the resolution was approved unanimously. Sorry, I was trying to get there too fast. Item 10C is awarded bid. 10C1 is bid number 2020-30. This is for two half-ton pickup trucks. Mr. Worthington?
Thank you, mayor and council. As the mayor said, this bid was for the purchase of two pickup trucks. We followed all of our standard practices in advertising this bid opportunity. Received 11 responsive bids altogether, ranging from $38,982, that's boat trucks, to $50,360. It would be staff's recommendation that we would award this bid to Humboldt Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, who was the low bidder for a total amount of $38,982. This was for the purchase of Dodge Rams, 1500.
What questions do you have relative to this bid? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the bids as they have been presented. So move.
Sorry.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show that the bid was accepted unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Worthington. I think you have 10D, which is purchasing policy revisions.
I do. Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, if you remember, two weeks ago, your work session, we discussed several changes to the city of Perry's purchasing policy. What you have in your board pack is a red line draft that encompasses all of those changes. I'll briefly go over, here's what our current policy says. As you can see, what you can see here is anything under $500 does not require any sort of competition.